Okay, good evening, everybody. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available on the table near the entrance or online at the city's website. Consent agenda items are routine items which are voted on in one motion and vote. Unfinished or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given the opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who do wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so during the public comment section for up to three minutes. With that, I will start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And first up, any disclosure of conflict of interest, any conflict of interest in any of the votes that any councillors will take this evening? Seeing none, we will move right into a presentation, a review of the fiscal, financial report for fiscal year 2025, fourth quarter. Christina. Good evening.
It's that time of year again, I guess. The attached financial reports provide the unaudited account positions for the general fund, outstanding debt service, bond borrowing, project list, TIF funds, investments, checking accounts, and trust and bequeathed accounts. I have begun an additional page listing the capital projects, grants, and TIF projects that are not tracked anywhere else in the financial statements that are outside of the regular budget. The mayor said it would be nice to have a list of those other additional things that are going on and maybe have checkpoints in of where they stand. So as you can see, if you went through the packet, there's three pages there already. It is not completely finished yet, so I expect at least another half to a full page of them. That gives you an idea of just how many grants and things are running through outside of the regular budget. Overall, on the summary, the code enforcement budget shows a negative position for the year of $44,998.38. The result is, I believe, a projection, over-projection of the revenues. There was a lot of debate and decisions near the end of the budget, and some of those numbers were raised substantially. And they just didn't come in. Those projections just didn't come in in that budget, anyway. So that contributed to the shortfall in this department. The planning community development director position was in a negative position of $46,706.57. That was a result of the grant reimbursement for that grant writer position was promised for two years. It was included for three and the revenues was not removed. So it was money that was not supposed to come in, but was included in the budget lines as a projection. So that threw that off. Otherwise, that would have been in a positive position. The city overall finished in a strong position for the end of 2025 fiscal year. Revenues have slowed from the prior year. I project the city will close with close to 1.7. That is good because in this year, the amount of fund balance used was lowered to 1.7, and I had expressed concerns that I thought revenues were going to start dropping. So you lowered that by about $500,000, which I think the year is going to close about $500,000 less than fully replenishing that number. So we will keep watch of it and see where the audit comes out. So the undesignated fund balance remains strong and available for the operational cat flow and to mitigate unforeseen financial challenges for the future, I believe. I will continue to make recommendations during budget season of the best utilization going forward to offset the budget, and then the council has full authority to do as well with the remaining funds. But I... The city's interest rates on the check balances has dropped by 1.25% since July of 2024, bringing the prior 5% rate down to 3.75 currently. This results in a reduction of approximately $180,000 in less interest earnings. We have been using this for the capital funding above and beyond the $280,000 that we put in as a standby revenue for the accounts. So hopefully, we still earn enough interest to bring in some money to fund capital in the future, but we will assess that more when we get closer. And I'm happy to answer individual questions on any of the budget information, if anybody has anything.
Hi, thank you very much. Nice to see you. The 45K shortfall in code enforcement, is that because some fees associated with one project or another are behind schedule and that we may expect a surplus in a subsequent quarter? Or is that just an absolute gap in terms of...
I think it's a little bit of both. I believe, if I remember correctly, the code enforcement officer was there at those meetings, the budget meetings near the end, when those were increased, and he expressed that he didn't believe that we would make that much money.
Yeah, I remember that.
That some of those projects wouldn't go through in this year. And so, you know, it's always, there are always projections.
Yeah.
But he had put a different number in there that we began with, and where it ended up was a higher projection, and the monies just didn't come in, so.
Okay.
Does that help?
Sure, yeah. I was just wondering whether it was going to come back around or not.
This year, we would have to ask where he feels he'll be. We're just finishing up construction, you know, and moving into the fall. Hopefully, construction continues for a couple more months before it gets too cold or snow flies.
Yeah.
But Dan is much more, has the ability to predict.
Yeah.
What's online right now than I do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just so that I, I'm clear about what you said about the unassigned fund balance. You think that it will come in at one point, that we'll be able to return 1.7?
Correct.
Okay. Because right now, of course, it doesn't show that, but this is based, at least as I'm reading it. So that 1.159 will be, because the net balance shows, on the first page, shows at 1.1. So is, are there further adjustments that will be made to the budget?
There will be further adjustments.
Yeah, okay.
According to what the auditor finds and what shifts from one fund to another fund, there still are some outstanding due-to-froms from the TIF accounts, potentially between the airport, and last-minute revenues that get adjusted. They are outstanding receivables, and then they get rolled back in. So there are adjustments that are to be made still, and that's why I always put "unaudited."
Right, yeah.
So they're not definite, they're the best I can give you right now.
Okay. Well, it's going in the right direction, so that's good.
Yes.
And the debt service was greater than expected?
The debt service did not include, it's going to balance out. It did not include the $88,000 of the interest on the new bond, because it was an interest-only. However, they paid the premium on that, and so we have a revenue that came in of $88,000, $89,000 on the revenue side. So you'll see on the expense side, we paid more out, but we took in the money to cover the premium in the current year. So it will balance out, and there won't be any negative impact.
Okay.
And then on your, this page that I put in there, it gives you your fund balance and where it was in the prior year, and the amount that you had for the city's portion. So if you want to dig into it a little bit more, it gives you, at the end of '24, the city's portion is on the very end column of $3,575,262 that was available to be utilized. You use 2.4 in the current year out of that, leaving the 1.1 roughly, but you put 1.7 approximately back with it. So that'll give you a starting point going into the new year, so that helps.
Yeah. Great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on, moving on now to our city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Impact Task Force will be meeting tomorrow at 2:00 at the fire station. The housing summit's Thursday at 9:00 at the Green Block. There's still time to sign up. Go to the city's website. We currently have 50 people signed up for the summit workshop. Police Department will hold a charity cornhole tournament to benefit the department's Operation Hope, which is heroin opiate prevention effort. At the Head of Falls on Sunday, the 12th, October 12th, registration, you can contact the PD before October 1st. There'll be a meeting with mobile home park residents, a representative from park owner company, and city staff to discuss the moratorium on Wednesday, September 24th, at 8:00 in the morning here in the annex. At the Quarry Road project, the contractor is building four filter ponds that will hold back runoff water and also filter the water and help cool it before it is discharged in the Mesolonski Stream. Contractor has completed the road subgrade, and yesterday, they started on water sewer and underground electrical work. This will take a week or so. The underground utilities will just be stubbed through the project about 1,100 feet, so the road will not need to be dug up again in the future when the lodge is constructed. When all the underground utilities are complete, the contractor will put down a road stabilization fabric and build the road back up to grade. Hope to pave the base course of the road and parking lots by mid-October, with the surface pavement being done in the spring of '26. The yurt was moved and has been repaired by the facilities maintenance crew and is ready for the season. That's it.
Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to councillor comments and/or committee reports. Any councillors have any comments or committee reports that they would like to comment on? Seeing none, I would like to also offer the opportunity, we have our youth council here tonight. If you two want to just please introduce yourselves and just give us a little update of, we're kind of early on, but what we're doing so far.
Hey, I'm a junior at Waterville Senior High School.
I'm Taylor Muso, a member of the Waterville Youth Council. So far, we've only met twice, but within those two meetings, we have decided to expand our communications. So we're hoping to get some social media platforms off the ground, like Instagram or Facebook, to kind of expand our impact. And we're also working on a project centered around light pollution in Waterville. So, yeah, that should be great. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. All right, any, again, last call, no comments? I would like to just take this opportunity, just to recognize someone this evening. For those of you who know, we have, it's, I wouldn't, it's not an official committee of the city, but it is someone that we do work with quite closely. It's the South End Neighborhood Association, and for the last almost five, six years, has been held, been run by Anna Holdner, who has just recently stepped down. So in appreciation of all of her work, I drafted this letter, and I said, I was going to send it, and I said, you know what? Why don't I just bring her in and embarrass her a little bit, and just talk about all of the good things that she has been doing and has done down in the South End, representing this, this organization. So I'm just going to read this, and I will hand this to you. But, "Anna, as you step down from your role as president of the South End Neighborhood Association, I want to extend my appreciation for your leadership since January 2019. Your commitment has led to many achievements that have positively impacted the South End community. Your efforts have fostered a stronger relationship between the South End and the city, which has been vital in advocating for necessary repairs to the neighborhood streets and sidewalks. I truly commend you for advocating for enhancements to our parks, including new playground equipment and much-needed repairs to the Grove Street basketball court. Your focus on intersection safety improvements along the Gold, along Gold Street has made the neighborhood a safer place for everyone. Furthermore, your successful canvassing of the homestead, for the homestead exemption and veteran tax exemption programs has been a significant benefit for lower-income homeowners. During the pandemic, your collaboration with the Winslow Community Cupboard and the organization of support drives highlighted your compassion and steadfast commitment to members of the South End community. Your involvements in events like the Nightmare on Main Street and the Parade of Lights has also been instrumental in increasing Senna's visibility. Thank you, Anna, for your service and your lasting impact that you've made." So thank you very much. All right, with that, I will move on to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience here that would like to make a public comment on anything that is not on the agenda this evening? Sir, we'll start with you.
Hi, my name's Ira Mandell. I'm a resident of Waterville for just two years. Bought a large house on Cool Street with a front yard that stretches 250 feet long, so a lot of people out there passing by as I'm trying to fix up the landscaping after the house has been vacant for three years. And in that time, I've seen all kinds of people, doctors, lawyers, homeless, people drug addicted. I made friends with a fellow who was waiting trial for murder. He lived across from CVS and directly across the street from me, a teenager committed suicide just a few months ago. So it represents America, and underlying a lot of these things is recognized as a disconnectedness in the community. Senna's doing great work. I was inspired to meet with Paula, Bruce White, many people to talk, and it seems like it's gaining traction in terms of a good idea to form another community association. We're going to call it the Cool Neighborhood Association, but it's not limited to that area. Anybody wants to join, really even outside of Waterville is fine. So we're looking to partner. We're meeting with lots of folks right now. We're going to have three meetings in the neighborhood. October 4th is the first. I'll leave some cards here for anybody who wants to grab them. There's about 20 cards. And then also, for more information about that, and also a copy of a poster. It's called "How to Build Community." The first two things are turn off your TV, could be turn off your cellphone, leave your house, and get to meet your neighbors. So I think that's really at the core of us moving forward in a healthier and happier way. So we look forward to working with the city council as well, and I want to leave more time for other people to talk, so I'll just leave these here for anybody who would like to take them.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Could you just say, you said October 4th, there's a meeting. Could you say where and when?
Oh, yes. Okay, so it's at the Lutheran Church on Cool Street, 36 Cool Street. It starts at 6:00 PM. Purposely going to try to keep it short, just an hour and a half. I'll be providing the pizza for everybody and ask people to bring a dish to share. So, and then there'll be another one two weeks after that, which is October the 18th, and then the third will be November 8th. So we have a website, it's www.jjcool.org. JJ Cool stands for John Jacob Cool, who is the Revolutionary War soldier for whom the street was named. So, any other questions?
Excellent. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Griffin, good evening, sir.
Thank the council for allowing me to ask this question. And I'm not sure if this situation here with the, with the charter school purchasing land in Waterville, is that on tonight?
It is on tonight.
Okay. I couldn't kind of follow, but thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome, sir.
I'll be back.
You okay?
Yeah, my name is Richard Weiss, and, you know, I had a dream a long time ago to give back to the children of Waterville. And, you know, I wanted to build a street hockey rink here in Waterville. And at the time, council said they didn't have the money. But I went back to Matt Skian. Couple weeks ago, I spoke with him. I got a friend in Lemnester, Massachusetts. His name is Chris Howzer. He builds street hockey rinks. You know, I want to give back to the children everything that I had, you know, all the fun that I had as a child. And, you know, the Boston Bruins, Chris said that they might be willing to pay for part of the rink, you know, building the rink. But I'm just, I'm not giving up on my dream. I'm not doing it. I did it last time. You know, I started a foundation called Pennies from Heaven, and, you know, I just want to tell each and every one of y'all, I'm just a nobody. I'm trying to tell everybody all about somebody who saved my soul, huh? Jesus. And if ain't nobody told you they love you today, I love each and every one of y'all. God bless you, and y'all have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I am Nikia from Ward 7. Just wanted to also start it off and say that September is also Suicide Awareness Month. On the early morning of Saturday, September 13th, my whole world could have changed. I was woken up by my mom screaming for me to wake up. The words still echo my head as she's telling me that my son is at the Two-Cent Bridge, surrounded by cops, and he wanted to kill himself. It was at that moment, my, my life also came to a stop. My worst fear is that his last breath would be my first breath without him. As we got to the Two-Cent, I was stopped by an officer from Winslow. As he's telling me what's going on, all I can hear is the voice from Charlie Brown's teacher. As my feet are on the cold, wet grass, I instantly felt like I was going to be sick. And then I was to go, and then I was told to go to where the ambulance was and wait. Wait, a four-letter word that means so lot, means a lot. How long would I have to wait for? Would this be the last time I see my son, my baby, my world? As I'm standing there with my mom and a few of his coworkers, hearing all the positive things they had to say about him, but nothing is making any sense. I didn't want to wait anymore. I wanted to be the, do the job of the police. I wanted to see him. I wanted to talk to him. That is my job. Seconds felt like a lifetime, each second going by, and I still didn't know what was going on, only that they were talking to him. As I'm still standing there, his coworker's still talking highly of him. All of these words I already knew and felt, but these are the words that he needed to hear. After what seemed to be a lifetime, which was only an hour, I got the best words I could ever hear. They have him. He is safe. It was at that moment, it was like the very first cry on the day he was born, all over again, something you can't ever get back. Seven officers that night were only doing their job. Seven officers doing what they were trained for. Officer Heath, Officer Libby, Officer Dinsmore, Officer Woods, Officer Hodges, Officer Leathers, and Officer Charbonneau. I will always thank you more than any words could describe. I know you could say that you were only doing your job. I know you could say that you were only doing your job, or that's what you were there for. That is all true, because it goes beyond, sorry, because all of you that night, including the ambulance drivers and the staff at the hospital in general, I can write this letter of thanks instead of writing my son's life story for his obituary. All of you forever will be the semicolon in our lives, which means his life isn't over. Thank you again for all that you did that early morning on Saturday, September 13th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ryan Tippett, Ward 4. Thank you for this moment. So, one week ago tomorrow, this country witnessed one of the most despicable acts of political violence in recent memory. Charlie Kirk, age 31, political activist, man of faith, husband, father of two, gunned down for the simple act of speaking to people who disagreed with him. Gunned down by a vile ideology which suggests that words are violence and must therefore be met with actual violence. This is wrong. It's disgusting. It's beyond comprehension. And I can only ask that we take a moment to, to just understand that we must talk to each other, because Kirk himself said it best, "When we stop talking is when things go wrong." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Patty, anyone online this evening? All right. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the passage of the consent agenda?
So, motion, yeah. Motion for consent agenda. Thank you, Flavia.
All those in favor? Wonderful. Any opposed? No? Okay. All right. Moving on to old business, Resolution 157, 2025.
We have a motion to read by title.
I'll move to take, to read by title on the second.
All those in favor?
Council Harada, you are also in favor. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. So, Resolution 157, 2025.
Yes, ma'am.
Approve use of funds from the downtown Tiff for paving the concourse.
Move to it up.
Second.
Okay. This is come through a few times. Cornell, would you like to?
Yes, they're still working on the lease agreements, because there's more than one tenant other than Uncle Dean's. So, I'm wondering whether the council would consider amending this resolution to add that provided that Uncle Dean's has signed a lease in the concourse. And that way, once it's done, we can proceed with paving instead of kind of coming back to the council, because we are getting short in the season for paving. So, just consideration whether you want to do that.
Okay. So, just so I understand, your ask of the council, instead of tableing this another two weeks in the hopes, or, you know, until we finalize some things, that we just simply adopt or insert the language that says that we're going to approve this paving only if Uncle Dean's is the tenant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
I'll move to make that change.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
So, can we move it as amended?
Move it as amended, yeah.
So, moved?
Second.
We good? Thank you, ma'am.
So, now we need to vote on it as amended?
Correct. Yep. All right. And now, again, all those in favor? Wonderful. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to Resolution 184, 2025.
Refer to the Planning Board zoning ordinance amendment, commercial D-zone.
Move to it up.
Second.
Okay. All right. So, this is a referral to the Planning Board. All right. Any discussion from the council?
I do believe that there's people here to speak on that. I think it'd be, it would behoove us to listen to them so we can.
Sure.
I don't know. I don't want to speak for the entire council, but that's how.
It's your birthday, so feel free to.
Birthday.
Slip that in there. Sure, yeah, no, that's fine. We always open it up to the council for it to kick it off. So, if the council has nothing and they're okay, if there's anybody that would like to speak on this topic, I think that would be great.
For clarity, this is for the charter school.
Correct. Didn't say that on here, but yes, you are correct, Spencer. Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak? Okay.
Good evening, Council.
All, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Larry, I know who you are, but can you just?
Larry Griffin.
Thank you.
Ward 3. Okay. Tonight, I rise to voice my concerns about selling what little land we have left in the city to anybody other than industry. Okay? As you know, a curse prevailed in 1873 when Waterville broke off with what was then West Waterville to, and Waterville. Waterville at that time took 12 and a half, 13 and a half acres, okay, out of the 45 or 46, and Oakland got the rest. Now, I assume, this was a big mistake on the part of the administration, and I assume one of the reasons was that at that time, there was a great deal of commerce on the Kennebec. And they thought, I guess, that that was going to be good livelihood, but after a while, that subsided, and Kennebec isn't used for industry much anymore. Okay? So, we have 13 acres, okay? And this, I don't see how anyone wants to give up what's left of those not acres, square miles, I'm sorry. Anybody that wants to give up anything other than to industry, which would be paying taxes. As you know, right now, as I've iterated and reiterated, one of the reasons that people do not come to Waterville is because of the high taxes. If we don't increase that tax base, we're not going to get anybody, and there will be no growth. Any questions?
No, sir. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
My name is Travis Works. I'm a Waterville resident and the executive director or the superintendent of Community Regional Charter School. So, we put in the amendment zoning change, and our understanding is that it gets referred to the Planning Board.
Yeah.
So, if there's any questions that the council has, would be more than happy to answer
Any questions of the council at this point?
How much is a charter school paying in taxes, property taxes?
We'll get into that.
Oh, I thought that was this gentleman there.
Yeah. No, right. But, yeah, this is simply just a referral to the plan. No decisions will be made here to this evening, but so, I'm sure all those things will come up as we move forward. But, yeah, so, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Travis. Anyone else?
I had a, is it appropriate to ask questions about the charter school before?
You can, sure.
How many students that live in Waterville go to the school now?
We have between Fairfield, Waterville, and Winslow, about 45 kids.
Just, I'm interested in Waterville alone.
I'll have to double-check that number. I think it's like around 20, 25. We currently have bussing in Waterville and Winslow. We've been bussing from Waterville and Winslow for the last couple of years to Scowhegan and to Cornville. So, 17% of our kids do come from homeschool. So, they're not enrolled in public school prior to enrolling in our school. They come from homeschool directly to us.
I noticed that you were anticipating basically doubling your growth if you did it in Waterville over the next 10 years. Where would you anticipate that growth coming from?
We currently have, our enrollment comes from over 45 towns. In the last 10 years, we take kids from 65 towns and eight counties. So, I think our current enrollment is about 50 towns, and we have about six or seven counties represented. So, kids travel up to a mile, up to an hour from the furthest bus stops around.
Now, in the letter, you mentioned that you would be willing to cap the number of Waterville students.
Absolutely. So, currently, if you look at our, 75% of our kids come from Somerset County. And we want to make sure that wherever we move to, that we don't disenfranchise that population group. And there's concerns that if you move the geographic center, that you may be taking spots away from the kids in the north that don't have access to school choice or options. So, we're completely fine and willing to do like a 5% cap in state statute when the new school opens for a charter school. There's a 5% cap for schools or school systems with 500 or less, and then there's a 10% cap for school systems that have more than 500 kids. We would go the most restrictive cap and set aside slots. That way, we make sure that we're not draining one particular area, right? Because that's a concern that I've heard. But also, we want to make sure that we're servicing and giving kids options to the north that don't currently have options.
Would you accept a cap that was numeric instead, like 20?
We could, that would be something to consider, so.
And with regard to our neighboring communities like Fairfield and Oakland and Winslow, would they be able to get caps as well?
Yeah, we would be open to looking at like caps or certain conditions. We're really, the big piece for us is finding a piece of property that has public water, three-phase power, and access to city sewer is great, but the two major ones are three-phase power and public water. And when you look at what the geographic region has, there's very few options in central Maine with three-phase power, which is really a critical piece for a size building that we're looking at with the mechanicals.
Now, the gentleman that was on before you expressed concern about giving up property for, you know, non-industry. Do you want to respond to that?
So, part of our proposal, our project, would bring the 12-inch water main, which is down on the Trachten Road and the West River Road. We would be, we would be bearing the financial cost to wrap that around down the Trachten Road to the exit and then up the Eight-Rod Road. Meanwhile, bringing the three-phase power down Trachten Road, there's already power poles there, but bringing them up the Eight-Rod Road and then also bringing the sewer line down the Web Road, from the Web Road down to the Eight-Rod Road. That brings infrastructure to a large amount of acreage that is not developed currently that could bring in more industry. And that total cost for, like, the whole package for those three utilities would be over $2 million of an investment. That then makes it accessible for future development for that land that's currently not there now.
So, your current location where you have your buildings now, you can't expand there?
No. So, like in Cornville, which is where one of our buildings are, there's no three-phase power. And then in Scowhegan and other areas, it's very hard to find a parcel of land with those utilities.
Are you looking to consolidate facilities?
Yes.
In Waterville?
Yes.
So, you would probably perhaps close down Cornville and Scowhegan?
Yeah, we would be liquidating those three locations and then relocating. So, it's a relocation. So, in our transportation, it's, when people think of geography and you look at like our transportation lines, we have buses that start in Solon. We have buses that start in Corinna. We have buses that start in Farmington, Pittsfield, Waterville, and Winslow. And when you look at the transportation piece of the time that kids are on the road, our current first bus stops are at 6:30 in the morning, okay? And if we, by moving to Waterville, even those towns in the north, their bus times start, go to 7:00. So, it's an improvement of transportation, because when you look at where the kids are traveling from, we know in Maine that east and west travel is very difficult, north and south is easier. And our current configuration with three buildings requires a lot of east and west travel. So, by being in Waterville, even though the geographic center has changed, it improves transportation for over 80% of our, well, 100% of our kids. But to the north, they benefit significantly.
How does this impact the public schools in the local area?
I think it all depends on, when you look at enrollment, I think that's the biggest fear that people have in the area is enrollment. Whether that impacts, we tend to take kids from homeschool rather than that they're not in the school system at that moment. But I think when you look at our programming, we're not just a regular school. It's not like operating apples to apples. We have a very unique system that is not time-based. It's not grade level-based. Kids don't really understand or know what their grade level means. So, we really put the kids in that customized learning environment where they need to be, when they need to be socially, emotionally, and academically. So, like, our recent graduating class, 66%, were duly enrolled in college classes while they were enrolled in high school. Other school systems around us are 12%. So, it's just different. We just have a completely different model and a different piece. Doesn't mean that it's better. It just means that it is different and it's a choice. So, I think it's about giving school choice to parents and kids.
Council, please.
So, just picking up on that theme, I'm over here, Ward 3. What, how many, what are the numbers, just estimates ballpark, of ESL students that you have in the school?
We've only had a couple ESL students in the past. Our special ed population is between 25 to 30%, and our free reduce rate is about 75%.
You anticipated my second and third questions.
So, it's very reflective of the region of Somerset County, which is, you know, which is poverty. So, we have a high free reduced lunch rate. Our special ed population is slightly higher than the surrounding districts, but it's right in the ballpark range. So, yeah. And the requirements to go to our school is that there has to be an opening, and they have to live in the state of Maine. That's it. So, there's no other criteria. We're not taking, we're not recruiting kids or any of those kind of pieces for talented kids or kids of higher income status, so, or high performance.
I guess, for lack of a better word, like, how many kids are you licensed to have? Or, I don't know if licensed is the right word, but like, what is your, the max enrollment for your school?
Right now, our buildings can only hold about just around 400 kids. So, we're limited to our capacity. I think with our contract with the state, we can take up to 450 right now under this renewal. But in our current configuration, we can only.
How many are currently enrolled?
About 400, so.
And what do you anticipate, you obviously anticipated growth?
Yeah. We're unable to grow in our current configuration because, because of space.
And with the new location, you expect to expand to, to serve, be able to serve what number?
The building is cited for 550 kids.
In his letter, they talked about more than doubling the growth in 10 years.
Yeah. If you look at the last 10 years, so since I, I've been at Community Regional Charter School since it's at the end of its second year of operation. So, I've been there for 12 years. We had 90 kids at the time, and over the last 12 years, we've grown from 90 to over 400. So...
You, you have two locations, Cornville and Skowhegan, correct?
Yeah, three buildings.
Three buildings.
So, yeah. So we have a small building on South Factory Street. It's about six thousand square feet, has about fifty pre-K kids. And then in Cornville, we have about a hundred and seventy-five kids. And that's, that's K through eight. And then the building in downtown Skowhegan is six through twelve. So there's overlap in each of those buildings because we, we truly, we don't put the kids by grade level. So if a kid's working on double-digit multiplication and they're ready for the next step, they go to that next learning opportunity that they can meet that. They're not waiting for, you know, the whole class to be exposed to it and then move on.
So the expectation is people who are enrolled in, say for instance, in the Cornville school, are they going to have to then travel to Waterville in order to get their education?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, with, you know, Waterville having the Mitchell School, the Hall School, the Junior High, the High School, Temple Academy, and Mount Marisi, now we want to add a second, a seventh school, and I'm assuming that it's tax-exempt, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Green.
Yeah, I, I just, I have a question about why you need to grow. I mean, I don't understand, you know, it's not a business. So, and, and we have a declining population in Maine, so I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious about the motive. Or, you know, what's your, what's your thinking about your desire to grow the school as opposed to improve the option that you're offering to students?
So I think it's a couple of different factors. One is that we need to be in a single building because the inefficiency is just not there. We're in three aging buildings. And if we had access to the revolving state fund, then our buildings would be on the top of the list. So when you're looking at millions of dollars of repair to, to maintain old existing buildings that you can't use revolving state funds for, so you have to use it out of your state subsidy, so you're living within your means. We don't have access to going to the city or to the town for a referendum to, to raise or to, to do additional. And I think a recent figure that I heard from the Charter Commission was that basically for like every ten thousand dollars that we receive for kids from the state, other locals or other school systems have sixteen thousand. So if you look at that, I mean, we're operating, we have less than two million dollars annually, just in that figure alone, with our current size. And a big piece for us is getting the, the efficiency and effectiveness of those dollars. So when we look at three buildings, the redundancy is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. I'd rather put that towards a new payment that goes to a, a new building that doesn't need as much repair. And you can also offer better programming. And when you are ten miles apart between buildings and it's a seamless system, it makes it really challenging. So quality of programming is a big one for being in a single building. So it's not about growing for the sake of growing. There is a need for, for parents and kids that are looking for a model that fits them. So it's not the same model that's offered. It's not like two grade level systems or time-based systems that are offered side by side, okay? And use Waterville and Winslow. If it's time-based and grade level-based, they're side by side. They're more in competition. For us, we're offering a, a very unique innovative model that you won't find in this region or across the state, so.
I have a question. I, I'm a big advocate for public schools, always have been. I haven't paid a whole lot of attention to the other types of education opportunities. And I, and I don't understand or appreciate how this could help Waterville. I just, what do you do that's different than a public school?
Our programming is very customized around individual learning needs. So, so for example, every, every child's learning path is completely different than the person sitting next to him. It, it's just, it, it's hard to explain in a, in a quick little snippet, and I can share more about our programming. But by not grouping them and regrouping them by their grade level or the day that they were born, because that's really what grade level-based systems are, and having a predetermined set of things for that one age level, whether they get it or not, exposing them and moving them on, we, kids do not progress in our system unless they master the skill and it's truly proficiency or competency-based. So they have to demonstrate proficiency with three to five pieces of evidence over a course of time, and then they can move on.
So you anticipate that there's a more need for your type of education out there?
Yeah, I think there's a, it's not a, like if you look at our demographics and if you look at where the kids are coming from and all those pieces, a traditional grade level-based model works for a lot of, a lot of families and a lot of kids, and that, that's very valid. But there's a, there is a sector or population of kids and families that are looking for something that's more customized around their needs that will meet their kids' needs socially, emotionally, and academically. And they're, and this gives them that choice. So we don't have kids like large droves coming from any one particular town or area. I think it's that, offering that as a choice and an option for, for families that are looking for it.
And from your perspective, there's more need out there. You don't, that's a part I don't.
So like today, there was a, there was a Facebook post and I, I reached out to the family because this week, they, they just enrolled, they live in Pittsfield. They don't have transportation or limited. They were, you know, they, they were asking if we could do a Pittsfield bus stop because we have one in Pelmyra. And they were ride-sharing to get to the bus stop in Pelmyra. So we created one in Rennie's at Pittsfield this week on Monday. She was so excited because it meant that the walk was only twenty-six minutes for her daughter to get to the bus stop. Parents are willing to walk. They're willing to do whatever it takes to get to a bus stop and then travel on the bus for over an hour. So she was happy when I called and I said, we had, we made some adjustments and we can actually pick up and see in Brown in Pittsfield and we can create that stop and we can start that in the next two days. So her daughter doesn't have to walk twenty-six minutes. But the, there's a large commitment of families that they're, they're looking for something that's different that they feel is going to meet their child's best interest. And they're willing to go the distance for it. So relocating to Waterville, we're anticipating only a one or two percent attrition with our current enrollment coming to Waterville. So we're not adding five hundred or four hundred kids from Waterville. We're bringing those kids with us that are currently enrolled and then adding to it. So, and whether we're in Waterville or Skowhegan, we still have buses in Waterville and Winslow.
Yeah, so my other question about your, you know, your interest in relocating to Waterville. You had mentioned that you needed a build, you needed a location that had public water and three, three-phase power. But as I understand, I mean, that, that doesn't exist in this location, so I guess.
It's within reach to, to pull it. So, because it's, it's a mile, so. And when you look at the CMP map, if you guys pull it up in ArchGIS and look, it's very, very clear there runs like on Route 201 between Skowhegan and finding like thirty-five or more acres for a suitable site is very difficult, even within a mile of it. So this location, yes, it's going to cost an investment to pull those utilities around, which we're willing to do because we could have decided to put a tank farm in there, like in the, in the proposal plan. If we chose to put in a tank farm, which means that we can run off wells, it's going to cost us about a little bit less, but pretty close, to running public water. But it only benefits one parcel of land. So it would pay the difference and just get it, so that way it benefits a large area for there, so economic impact.
So to summarize, I'm, I'm just trying to understand the impact for Waterville. So what the city of Waterville is going to get out of it is access for parts of the city that don't currently have three-phase power and twelve-inch water main. But we don't get any, we're not going to be able to relieve any property tax for the citizens.
I think it opens up the door for economic development to bring in more tax revenue in the surrounding area. So if you look at the amount of the property there that is undeveloped, and if you do a cost-benefit analysis of that forty acres and bringing those pieces around and now all of that other land is develop, developable, that, that does have a potential economic impact. The real impact that we know that we can make besides, because that's, you know, can be seen as hypothetical or you don't know if it's ever going to be developed, it's just the option. We're bringing the jobs. We're not just relocating fifty-five full-time jobs. We're adding to those jobs. Economic development in terms of the workforce development, but then also the ability to do community partnerships and there's some more indirect and direct costs savings for the city, so, and partnerships.
Counsel Green.
Does that not cause a conflict with public schools, though? Because if we are already in a position where we're struggling to have teachers and ed techs and things like that, and you're looking at expanding, you know, twenty, thirty, fifty positions or what, or what have you, those would be pulling from that same pool in our, in our area. And if we're already struggling for that, then that's.
Yeah.
Going to be a.
I mean, you could look at that way. You could also look if there was a, a large, I don't know, a large corporation that wanted to move in and you would say the same thing with the workforce, right? There's only so many skilled labors that can work. It depends on the industry you're looking at, I guess.
Well, I would say in that case that that's up to, you know, private business can change how much they pay. We're looking at leveraging the taxpayer to try to up these salaries to be competitive. That's a lot more impactful to the average person in the city of Waterville than two businesses duking it out on who pays more. Like, we're looking at a real, people are going to have to pay for that.
Oh, I get it. And our, our budget being about a third less than other traditional public schools and for our starting pay to be higher than theirs says something about how we manage our money. So we're very fiscally conservative, so.
Thank you. I have a few concerns, aside from, you know, first and foremost is this is a, a big ask for the taxpayers of Waterville, for another tax-exempt property. We've just, you know, had to, we just had a tax increase in our property taxes. We all know that. The impact on our local school district as well. And also, we're currently still kind of in limbo with our fire department. And to put an added burden on them for a tax-exempt property is just something that I, I don't feel comfortable with. I, you know, I appreciate and respect the model here for your school, but I just don't think Waterville's the, the right place for it, in my opinion.
Hi. So assuming, let's just assume that you get referred to the planning board tonight and the process continues the way you would hope it does. What would be the, the time window of your project?
We'd be looking at, so we'd be going for a USDA direct loan and that takes up to twelve months to, to close on. So we would be breaking ground in another year and then opening up in the fall of twenty-seven or the, or sometime after that.
And, and like twenty-five thousand square foot building or what?
It would be a forty thousand square foot building, yeah. So the cost is about five hundred dollars a square foot. So the overall project would be about twenty million. That's with interest and that's everything. So the actual bill is about three hundred and fifteen dollars a square foot. So, but five hundred is all in and that's compared to the state average, I believe, recent schools are around seven hundred dollars a square foot.
Any other questions for Mr. Works? Okay, all right. Awesome. Thank you very much. Anyone else, sir?
My name's. Excuse me. My name's Harry Kajoyan from Trachten Properties. We own the former Wine Dot Mill at nine-seven-seven West River Road, and we have about five hundred acres of land in that area. I know the concern of the council would be the tax revenues you'll, you'll be losing. But on that particular piece, we pay about eight thousand a year. It's not, it, it's not like us taking the Wine Dot Mill off the tax rolls. As rural land, we're really not paying a lot of money for that parcel of land. So I just want to make sure that we, everybody understands that. And also, on top of those improvements coming down Eight Rod Road, it's really going to benefit the other parcels that we do have in the area for future development, be it housing or industrial. I've lost a few potential leads over the years and it was because of the expensive cost of putting in that infrastructure. So we're hoping with this project, it could help really rejuvenate that, that side of the city. Any questions?
Yeah, I encourage you to do that, a work of finding organizations that can expand the power and the water. But obviously, you don't have the capital to do that yourself.
For the right tenant, we have the capital because at the end of the day, I have to go, just like when we built the On It Off Ramp, we put in about two and a half million dollars of our own capital to build that ramp at Exit 124. We have capital to do projects, but I have to, I have to justify the return on it. I have to make sure I'm landing a tenant that's going to be there for ten years and is going to be able to satisfy that, that service that I'm out on the street borrowing money for, to build a, a structure. If you see what goes on at the old Wine Dot Mill, that building's doing very well right now. It has a tremendous amount of employees there and we put a lot of capital into that building to bring it to where it is today. But we're open to investing in infrastructure if we have to, because we've done it in the past. And I think we have a pretty good track record of doing that.
Counsel Green.
Yeah, I, you know, one of my major concerns with this is, is that that area in Trachten, the Trachten Road area has been, you know, earmarked for business development. And I just don't see how this, this project fits that. It's something that we talk about all the time. It's in the comprehensive plan. You know, so and, and it's, it's not, so rezoning the property seems to have no benefit to Waterville in terms of taxes, in terms of developing the, the jobs and the economic infrastructure here. So I'm, I'm really struggling to see how this helps. I mean, it helps the Cornville school, I guess, but also it's just such a huge project with such an investment of cash. I, so I'm just really puzzled at the numbers and the motives on this and really unclear as to really why we should do this.
Sure. And, and to be clear, we're asking to go to the planning board. We're not changing the zoning. Right now, it's contract zoning, correct? All I'm trying, all we're asking to do is to add private school and public school into that zoning. Our zoning right now allows for, sorry for the glasses, I'm getting old. It allows for daycare, convenience stores, recreational facilities. We just wanted to be a little thorough and really ask the planning board to define it as a public, a public or a private school as one of the designations that it's currently zoned for.
Well, it is an adjustment to the zoning. It's a zoning change, yeah.
But, and, and I understand your question. I, I've, I've been coming up to Maine handling this project since nineteen ninety-eight. And I, I have a little love for this project and I want to see something done in the area. We, I'm proud to work up here. I'm proud to have that building in our portfolio and the rest of the land. Not having the utilities brought down that street has hurt me over the years. And in particular, the water, because you need fire suppression at any of these big facilities. I'm hoping with this water line, there's a hundred and twenty-seven acres to the north of this parcel. We could, we could do housing there with, with town water. I don't even need sewer. I could do that with septic. I'm trying to look at the big picture. I can't speak to Travis's points here because I don't know much about the, but I'm just saying from a development point of view, I think this could be a good thing for the rest of the parcels in the area.
I, I do. I'm, you know, I want obviously something to go into that area as well. But I want something to go into that area that benefits Waterville. So I'm with Counsel Harard. I, and it appears Counsel Green. We're all up here to try and do what's best for Waterville. A lot of people opened up envelopes this week, last week, with their tax bills, you know, doubled, tripled. So we, you know, we, we have to make. So, we, you know, we, we have to make decisions that are best for Waterville, and this isn't best for Waterville.
Yeah. And, and I appreciate that, and I, I, I think we could get 12 tax bills from the city. It's my obligation, and we pay it, and because we utilize the services in this community. So, I, I want everything to be done correctly here, but, because we are, we are pretty big taxpayers. I'm not a developer from out of town who just optioned this land, so.
Yes.
So, speaking to my fellow counselors, I, I wish to remain agnostic at the moment as to whether I think that having a charter school is, in Waterville, is actually good for Waterville or not. I would suggest that it certainly does not hurt us in any way to get more input and review by the planning board, since that's what we're here tonight to decide upon as to whether it should be pushed forward to the planning board. All of the concerns that all of us have, I think, are certainly well-founded, and this tonight is not our, will not be our only chance to express those concerns. And in fact, those concerns may be, may be bolstered or mitigated, certainly clarified in whatever way the planning board may be able to provide to us. So regardless of how I may feel one way or the other about the, the charter school, and as I said, I'm remaining agnostic on the point here, I personally think that it makes eminent sense to get Ann Beverage and, and the rest of the planning board's eyes on this project. So, I'm, I'm going to be voting in favor of it myself.
I would like to comment on that. As, I was on the planning board previously, and they've got plenty to do. And, you know, in this case, I don't think there's any need to, to go forward with this, because I don't believe that changing the zoning is in, is in Waterville's best interest. So, I just assumed have Sam back there not have to deal with this. Thank you.
I, I, listen, I certainly understand where you're coming from, Counselor. I, in anticipation of what was going to happen, I did reach out to, to Bill Lee and just to ask him with regard to this vote. His response was, "Hi, Mike. Under the ordinance, any proposed zoning change must be referred to the planning board." So, we're not in a position to, to say no to sending something to the planning board for review at this point. So, thank you.
Hi, Mike. Larry Griffin, Ward 3.
Yeah.
And I would like to commend the gentleman from the charter school. I thought, is he still here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I think you are very eloquent. Could you tell me, though, how much land you'd be utilizing?
41 acres.
41 acres? How many acres are out there?
On the parcel we're looking at, it's 41. So, we're, we're looking at
No, but in its totality. Does anyone know? No? Okay.
I could speak. We have 400 acres in one of those, that, that, of what that's, could, could separate parcels.
Interest in trials and tribulations.
Sorry. Larry, you talk out there, nobody out here can hear you. So, if we're going to have like this, these questions
Speak into your mic.
Just speak into the mic, Larry.
The microphone.
Thank you.
Voice is loud enough.
No, no, they, well, it's loud enough for here.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah.
We on?
You.
Okay. So, basically, 41 acres, and how much, how much in the way of taxes will, will this include? What, what will you be paying for taxes?
Uh, taxes.
Okay. Everything that was said about the charter schools this evening is superfluous to the matter at hand. Okay? You're here tonight to make a decision on property, okay? We can't afford to give up a whisker, a cat's whisker of land, okay? Because we need, we need industry here, and, you know, the Growth Council has had a very difficult time in bringing people in.
Yeah.
Okay? We need to lower that tax base. Without it, going back to 1873, the city administrators, they put a nail in the coffin. I hope you folks tonight don't put another nail in the coffin.
I absolutely understand what you're saying, Larry. But tonight, we're not talking about that. Tonight, all we're talking about, at this point, in this stage, in the infancy of this, of this particular resolution, is simply just to refer it to the planning board. Where those discussions, and will, will, will take place and determine
Okay. Thank you very much.
That determination, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, Larry. Thank you. Sir, I'm sorry. We, we have people behind you, one second. So, yeah, you know, you're fine.
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
Amy Murphy, Ward 2.
Thank you.
I appreciate that's going to go before the planning board, but I do want to make myself clear right now. I believe that we do offer lots of choice in Waterville. We have a Montessori school, we have parochial schools, we have public schools. I kind of take offense that we don't meet the needs of children. We absolutely meet the needs of all children where they are. That's something that we do. We work really hard to do that. I don't believe that the school is accredited. When I think about what we want for Waterville, I don't believe the school is accredited, and I don't think that their teachers are certified. When I think about, you know, when Spencer was talking about resources, I don't think teacher resources, because we expect certified teachers, but I do believe bus drivers and substitutes, that, I agree, that will really impact us. It's so hard for us to get subs right now. And, you know, I know it's going before the planning board, but I do think it's going to be a huge tax on our resources for schools, and I just don't think it's the best thing for Waterville. If we want something to shine, if we want Waterville to continue to shine, I don't think this charter school would be appropriate. Thank you.
You're next.
Hi, Lisa Evans, Ward 6. Also, not in agreement with the school being built in Waterville. I appreciate the land comments, but for me, the, the fact that we're, that it's being glorified, that they're going to put in the infrastructure, that will garnish more businesses on that road, well, the gentleman that owns all that property should have thought about that when he purchased the property, and not let it fall on someone else to come in and do that for him, and now this is going to make it more valuable or enticing for him to sell those properties, for other businesses to come into Waterville, to make it great for us, at the expense of the school moving in here. I don't think that's going to happen, sorry. And what we're going to lose by having the school built is immeasurable. So, I am not in favor of the school coming to Waterville.
One second. Sorry, did you want to just, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, you know, the cost for the hockey rink is, Chris gave us a quote. It's going to be $275,000. And I went over there, and I talked with some people at City Hall, you know, today, and they said the only problem would be finding the land. And, you know, I, I know, I'm personally going to call the Boston Bruins.
Okay.
I'm going to call them. And, and I'm, I'm going to make sure that, that they, that they do what they said they were going to do.
All right.
You know, and, but, before I go, because I got to go, you know, I got to get back to the shelter, you know? I'm like Jesus, homeless. He said, "Man, foxes got holes, birds got nests, but the son of man has nowhere to rest his head." But that's okay, you know? I want to tell each of them, one of y'all, again, that I love y'all, and I'll be back, okay?
Thank you. Enjoy your evening.
You too.
Good evening. Sir?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, about you.
No, you're fine.
But we're very sensitive of what we have there and what our land holdings are. We have pulled down the water line down Traffter Road to the tune of a half a million dollars. We didn't ask for any money from anybody when that happened. So, that did happen, and, and we worked with Kennebec Water to get that accomplished with the 12-inch main.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense to extend it further until we know who else is coming to the area. That's number one. Number two, when we did the on and off ramp, we, we asked for help from the city. At that time, they couldn't help us. We funded that whole project with the Maine DOT and the EDA. So, I don't want anybody to think that we're looking for handouts here. We, we, we really aren't. We understand there's limitations, and we, and we step up to the play when we have to. So, but I appreciate her comment. We, we do know what we have here, and we're sensitive to that. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none. Can I get a vote? All those in favor of referring this to the planning board?
Okay, so we've got DeBrito, Clepack, and Green.
Yeah.
All those opposed?
Well, and I'm, I'm not sure that we're legally allowed to not send it to the planning board.
Why are we, why is it not on the agenda?
Why is it before us?
Yeah. Well, it's, that's, that was a question that I had. It's, it's, it's a, it is a, it is a city pass-through. It's in, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I think the point here is that, obviously, a lot of people have, have strong feelings about, about this matter, but the proper place for that discussion is at the planning board. And that is why we're required to refer it to the planning board. And so, I would, you know, I, I would urge my fellow counselors to, to reconsider so that we can, you know, do our job and refer it to the planning board, which is the proper channel for having the discussion. And that's all I have to say.
I mean, I am willing to reconsider my vote on that, but I just then question why it's even here. I guess legally, it has to be, but this seems to be kind of counterproductive if we are voting on something that we can't vote on. Like, that seems to be a bit odd.
It is a formality.
We, we can vote to not refer it, but then it opens us up to legal liability.
Oh, I understand that. I meant the, I guess, the, the logistical reason that we have to do this, instead of it just being a, we're, we're all kind of in agreement of like, oh, yes, this will then pass on and just kind of like move past it. I guess I don't understand the
If we vote to not, which we just did, it opens the city up to legal liability. It's our prerogative to not refer it, but it is then, the ball is now no longer in our court.
I, I think, you know, in the spirit of what we're doing here, which is conducting the city's business, the matter deserves an opportunity for discussion, even though we've all made ourselves clear where we stand on it right now. I think the right thing to do with the process we have is, is to refer it and, and let the full discussion occur there.
Perhaps
And then, we have our, we have the final decision on the matter.
Perhaps in, in the absence of the city solicitor, perhaps the next best thing, our city manager could give us his thoughts on where we are at this moment.
I've not run into that. I haven't talked to Bill about the issue. I would question why it would come to the council first to be referred to the planning board if, if there were no option, if it were just de facto council to, to planning board. So, it would take, I'd do some more research, I guess.
Okay. I'm happy to reconsider my vote, as I said, on this. And if we take another one, then, you know, so be it. But as an addendum to this vote, I would like to see the process, some more information on this.
Well, you could table it and ask Bill to attend the next meeting.
But, but point of order here, a person who voted down is going to have to be the person to call for a reconsideration.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. And then, that has to be seconded by also a person who voted it down.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah. And then, that reconsideration has to be voted upon.
I don't know if the reconsider needs, the, I don't think it needs to be seconded. I think it just needs to be brought to the, by a member who was on the
There needs to be a motion to reconsider.
I'd like to bring a motion to reconsider.
Okay.
There has to be a second.
There needs to be a second.
Yes. Thank you.
I don't believe it does, but there needs to be a second.
I'll second.
So, there's a motion on the floor to reconsider. Shall we vote on that?
Yeah.
Put it back on the floor?
Sure.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Gillie is opposed, Beal is opposed, and Harrod is opposed. So, it's 4-3, so that passes. So, 184 is back on the floor.
Okay. And, so, I guess we'll, again
So, I'm going to motion to table it until the next meeting.
Okay. Fair enough. We have a second.
I need a second.
Oh, yeah. Second.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed?
So, opposed is Harrod, and Gillie, and Green. 4-3. All right.
Awesome. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to Resolution 185, 2025.
Authorize the renewal of a special amusement permit to the president and trustees of Colby College doing business as Colby College Joseph Family Spa.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to mention something that came up when we were looking at the agenda. It does look like Colby College is running a spa, but it's actually a restaurant for students, and, and I think perhaps that name is a little tongue-in-cheek, but anyway, in case anyone's wondering. It is, it is a student restaurant on campus.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
What are we doing? I, I don't understand what this is for.
Mayor, I can, I can give a short explanation.
Special amusement permits are required where alcohol is served, and there's also live entertainment. So, a special amusement permit is required at this location, and we do have to have a public hearing on each special amusement permit renewal. So, that's why this, even as a renewal, is on the council agenda.
Thank you very much.
It's, it's, it's the student union. It's the pub, basically.
Oh, it's the pub, right.
Yeah.
All right. With that, all those in favor. Moving on to Resolution 186, 2025.
Adopt the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee charge for an ad hoc committee.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Wonderful. And moving on to Resolution 187, 2025.
Establishing hours for voter registration for the November 4, 2025 referendum election and regular municipal election.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Moving on to Ordinance 188, 2025.
Amend the Haynes Charity Fund Ordinance, Chapter 35.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion with regard to this? Seeing none. All those in favor? And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So will
Second.
Thank you.